Welcome, everybody, to the town of Hennessy's special Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees Special Meeting Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
John.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
David.
Here.
Um, other scheduled business, two point one, uh, discussion with representative of utility technology service on the water meters. So, um, we've brought in, um, the UTS who sold us the water meters and, um, we've got a couple of gentlemen here that, uh, are here to kind of talk about our water meters. I know we had a lot of questions as far as how the meter works, how it's different than, uh, the older style. Uh, we've gone to an electronic water meter. They're here going to do a presentation with us. Um, if you guys got any questions? Um, the main thing is, is, you know, we were going to keep it, keep it kind of short. You can ask some questions. Um, they're going to do a small presentation. They kind of teach us about the water meters and then, um, we'll, we'll take some questions. Um, we just, we want to, you know, we want to keep it civil and, and, uh, learn, uh, learn about the meters and, uh, try to, try to make this as productive as possible. So, um, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the, uh-
Can we move the podium so we can see the screen?
Yeah. I don't know why not. Sorry. We're impromptu trying to, trying to make it as fast as we can, so. So, are you ready? Yeah, 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 absolutely. You guys-
Thank you, guys, uh, for inviting me to be part of this discussion. Uh, I'll come out here with, uh, some, uh, more knowledge and some, uh, confidence. Um-
I'm actually, uh, I'm Jeff Schultz. I'm the, uh, regional account manager. So, I deal with the day-to-day interaction with the, with the customer and the, uh, and our, and our, uh, partners. Um, TJ, TJ introduced himself, but, uh, TJ is our, um, AMI, uh, meter expert, um, for us, and he's been with us, uh, since day one. Um, he, uh, I'll let him kind of give you a little bit of his background, but, uh, he's, uh, everything meters. So, you got the right guy in here today. So, that TJ, I'll let you kind of give your background a little bit.
Hello, TJ Powell with UTS. I've been here for sixteen years. I've been working with the census manufacturer for over twenty-five. So, any census products sold in the past twenty-five years to any community, any real water district, probably been a part of one degree or another. And currently, uh, Hennessy is using a touch read meter reading system where they have to go to the water meters and they take a wand and they touch a certain touch pad on top of your meter can, and that transmits the reading from the meter itself to the auto gun that then is transferred to a collection device, just a handheld, and that handheld then sends the readings into the billing system automated. So, nobody has to type in the readings manually. Um, they also have here in Hennessy, they have a radio read system that basically it's a different type of device on top of your meter cans. It's a mushroom cap, and that has a transmitter. So, the transmitter samples the meter every single hour, and as they come around once a month through their billing cycles and the, and the time that they need to collect their meter readings, they drive around the road, anything with a radio, and the vehicle has a, a collector in it, and it communicates to that radio, captures the current reading and stores that reading, again, to be passed back into the billing system for the, for their readings. Um, the purpose of an AMR or, uh, a touch read systems or moving to an AMI system is one, to reduce operating cost of manually reading every single meter. Uh, meter cans are always filled up with water, crud adds, dirt, debris. Uh, meter readers will have to dig that out, excavate that out, manually read the meter and read it accurately, write down that reading on a piece of paper, hand it to a clerk that then has to type those readings into the billing system. So, the idea of an AMR system is remove that human interaction and capturing of that information of passing into billing to remove human error whatsoever. Um, the, that's the collection of the current readings. Now, Hennessy is interested in moving toward an AMI solution, which an AMI solution will put equipment on your water towers and basically will create a radio frequency that covers all of the distribution population of Hennessy's water meters. The endpoints that you have the radio is on, the ones with the mushroom caps, they'll convert over to a fixed base, and at that point, what the radio does is it will read the meter every hour, every fourth hour, it will speak the current reading of that hour, and then seven days worth of hourly intervals. So, once we can speak that to a tower that's listening, then we're just going to backhaul that data into a database so that the, that the, uh, utility can then look at what all the water readings are. The benefit of an AMI meter reading system is that you're reading the meters every single hour so that we can look for consumption pattern issues, like if a continuous flow event occurred on a meter. Right now, the only way that Hennessy knows there's a continuous flow event through a water meter is if they went to that meter, um, and they sampled that meter at that time. With an AMI system, it'll report those sampling every single hour so we can get historical information hour by hour for three years available with the touch of a button. The, so there's two components that you have. It's actually three components in Hennessy. You have just the meter itself, which has a touch, has a little touch pad. It's the small touch pad on top of your meter can, and that takes the gun that they physically touch and they squeeze a trigger, and it electronically captures that information and sends it to the handheld. Number two is the radio. The radio's with the mushroom cap, and right now, the radio, when the vehicle drives around to wake up and read the meters, once a month, it'll call to that radio, say, "Wake up and give me your current reading," and then go to sleep while I've captured your reading. It'll also report any alarms at that time, continuous consumption, continuous flow events, and other product alarms that are associated, any quality issues that we're experiencing within the product itself. That's all reported, captured by the collection device, and then reports are made at that time that the clerks then can then investigate if there's a problem with the product was, and then, uh, pass the readings over to the billing system. The water meters themselves are, they're, uh, they're twenty-year accurate water meters. They're guaranteed to be accurate for twenty years, plus or minus one and a half percent for the entire twenty-year period. So, that means a water meter, brand new, could be one hundred and one point five percent accurate, all the way to ninety-eight point five percent accurate. So, that's the plus or minus one and a half percent. And that standard is, is mandated by American Waterworks Association for all water metering products. Um, census manufactures these meters. Every meter gets tested, every single water meter gets tested before it leaves the factory, and if, um, and, and the accuracy of that meter is stamped on every single individual meter, what the flow rates are at a quarter gallon, what's the accuracy at a quarter gallon, what's the accuracy at two gallons, and what's the accuracy at twenty-five gallons per minute. Those flow rates change based on the side, size of meters, but your majority population that you have in residential services is five-eighths by three-quarter. And then, um, the meter, if there's any doubt of the meter's accuracy, you could have it independently tested, and the, the testing will conform to C-700 AWWA standards for testing a water meter, and again, measuring that quarter, two gallon, twenty-five gallon per minute flow rate. If the test comes back inaccurate, census will replace the product at no cost, giving Hennessy a brand-new product, not through UTS, but census metering will provide that product back to the Hennessy, and you'll get another twenty-year guarantee. The warranties are based on the date of manufacturing, when the product is manufactured. On the, on, if you look at the face of the meter, it has a date that it was manufactured and a date that it needs to be replaced by twenty years later. The way the water meters measure is electronically, uses a solid-state, uh, metering technology or, or a, um, mag-metering technology in that there's a specific flow tube area within the I Pro meter. We know that that, that area will stay the same. We have a couple electrodes on the side of the flow tube, and we measure the velocity of the ions in the water as it passes by. Because we know the area, we can measure the materials that are made up in water. We can measure the speed at which they pass by our electrodes. There's an equation called Faraday's Law that we can measure volume, volume. A couple conditions must exist for us to measure volume correctly, and that is that there must be a full flow, full pipe of water. There's also in the flow tube of the I Pro meter, a top-of-pipe indicator indicating that the, that the flow chamber is fully, uh, has water all the way to the top of the flow chamber. So, that's how the meter measures water, and it will, uh, uh, measure water accurately within that plus or minus one and a half percent for the twenty-year lifespan.
So, I wanted to interject too. He's talking, when you, I want to step back just, because this, every meter comes with this, is, and this is the test data for each meter. When it, it's tested, the meter data comes with every meter. So, if there's ever any question, it's, it's right with every meter, so.
It's not just one test, every single meter. One of the, one of the last processes of manufacturing is the testing procedure. The testing procedure, and when they stamp the serial numbers of the, of the meter number on the body of the, of the meter itself. That's done the last operation, and then that test is, is created, and that test ticket comes out for that specific meter that was past that point in the manufacturing. It's the last step of manufacturing. That point, they empty the water out of the water meter and they box it up, and it goes to whatever, whoever the customer is headed to. So, I could talk all day long and totally pass everybody out in this room about how the water meters work, but I kind of gave a brief overview of how the meters work. Are there any questions?
Yeah, you said it measures from ions. Is it, basically you're talking to conductivity of the water, right?
Yeah, so there are ma, there are materials that can be magnetized inside the flow stream itself, and we can measure the speed or the velocity of those.
So, what happens if the conductivity within the city water changes by a hundred parts per million?
I can't answer. I don't know what would happen. Uh, I don't, we have the six hundred thousand of these in Oklahoma right now and haven't had that issue in the past.
Okay. Um, the failures that y'all had before the, prior to two thousand fourteen, that's documented?
Yes.
What was the cause of the failure?
Different materials that were composed within the makeup of the electrodes. There was a change made that got addressed, and they changed those materials. The failure rates that would occur typically in that time where meters could over-register or the display went blank. Over-registering would be in the hundreds of thousands to tens of thousands of gallons when the, when the register failure would occur.
From what everything I read, was it basically said they were absorbing moisture, which is causing this?
That's another type of failure. In the piece-printed circuit board of the register itself, you know, the hardest thing to do with a water meter designed to live for twenty years and to live inside of a meter pit that can be totally encapsulated in water, mud, dirt, and debris, it's very harsh environments. It's keeping water intrusion out of the register within a printed circuit board.
And, and I agree with you, like, my meter sits a little bit in the mud, fills with water all the time.
Yes.
And that's, you know, I-
But that's the conditions that census understands is, we're not saying that meter cans need to be clean.
Yeah.
Uh, the meters are designed to live in, totally covered up their entire life in the worst of conditions.
In the worst of conditions, what would you say your failure rate is in meters? Like, one, ten percent?
Yeah, so from two thousand sixteen, and the way I understood, I, I spoke to census when we were coming to the meeting, and the current documented, not from TJ Powell, but from Census Metering Company, is that the, uh, failure rate since two thousand sixteen is point five percent. So, one, uh, five tenths of a percent is the failure rate.
And the last question, do they, they make a newer style meter now, right?
Not, not in the I Pro meter line. So, we just, census did release, I don't know, Jeff, in the past six months, a cordanelle, but that's in our inch and a half and larger meter lines.
Unless you're talking about the plus, they do-
It's the blue, blue and black. It's like a square box instead of-
That is, uh-
Oh, that's a European, yeah, that's not, that's not a North American, yeah. Yeah, so Xylem, uh, is, is, and, and we have worldwide markets that measure meters differently, have different technology and different requirements.
My, my last question will be, um, so like a gas flow meter, you got to have a certain length of pipe.
Yeah.
So, around this, these ones, you got to have, or is it just straight ninety, then do it, and you're fine?
Yes, it doesn't have what we call UD, UD zero requirements, no upstream or downstream requirements. Now, there are some requirements as far as throttling. You can create jetting that occurs, uh, if the valve has been throttled, so it's fully open. You can have valves or ninety-degree bends as long as there is no interruption in the flow stream itself.
Now, your length from your, as it comes up to your meter, and it goes this way and goes back down?
Yes, sir.
There's not a certain length that that pipe's got to be?
No, no. In the commercial lines, we're seeing that. That's always been a standard in commercial metering and also mechanical metering, but not in magnetic technologies.
All right, what about the level?
It doesn't matter what orientation the I Pro is at?
Because I, I know that, but like, because it's got to be level from-
No.
From one point to the other.
No, it, it could be in any orientation, twisted in any capacity, upside down, straight up and down, or even offset or adjacent.
The, the part that actually, uh, reads the, uh, flow going through there, now, is that polymer or is that metal or?
So, yes, sir. The, the flow tube itself is a copolymer metal made up of thirty-five percent fiberglass materials. The electrodes, which is what's being energized, it's, it's, I don't know the material makeup, but I do believe it's in your data sheet what the electrode material is made up of. Um, let me just refer to this. This is magnetic field. It may be an older data sheet, Jeff. Let, let me put Jeff on that. Jeff?
Yeah.
See if you can see what the, uh-
I'd like to have the twenty-five version of that.
This is, this is the latest, most accurate data sheet of the I Pro meter.
Yeah.
All, all of this information can be found on the Xylem website.
Yeah.
It's all available to anybody who wants to download it.
I went to that.
Okay.
That's twenty-two, so that's why I was asking if I could have the twenty-five version of it.
Yeah, yeah, so the version is up here, the, the year of the version is here, and, but if it's on the census website, it should be current, sir. So, there's been no changes since then.
Because my deal is, if you, if you run so many gallons through a meter, you know, whether it's polymer or metal or whatever, you're going to have corrosion, erosion, whatever through there. So, how, how, how does that meter adapt to that point? You know what I'm saying? I mean, that water goes through, it's going to make that hole bigger eventually, some shape, form, or nothing. So, how's that, how's that meter change that to, to where, you know, I can tell these people this is what's happening?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question. That's above, above my head, but I, I would not think that the water pipe would increase in ID.
Yeah, well, I mean, you have erosion, you know, water going through there, it's going to make that hole bigger, you know? Uh, you go drill a hole out there and you stick a water hose in it.
Right.
That dirt's going to come out. You, you throw a water hose on a rock, that rock's eventually going to go away. Yeah, it's going to take longer, but when you're in a contrapt, confinement, it, it's going to be even worse.
Right, right.
You know, our, our city water lines and all that stuff, we got, ain't brand-new, you know what I'm saying?
Certainly, yes, sir.
And that's why I'm asking is, you know, what's, what is, how, how's our meters adjusted to that? You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's got to be, it's got, because it, it's computerized, I understand that. Did corro, uh, did corrosion build up? Cause that?
Yeah.
You know, I already know airflow messes with them, you know? If air goes through there, air will mess with them.
How?
You know, because it still reads it. Your guys is on, on-
If the, if the meter li, has air in the line and it, and it takes the top-of-pipe sensor, it cannot longer sense water in it, then it no longer reads.
But, okay, that's you-
So, it gives you the water at that point.
All right, so, so you're saying air won't read through that?
Yeah, so that, if air is a part of water distribution system, and we don't measure air, we measure a full stream of water, and the top-of-pipe sensor is, what we're doing is we're making sure it's fully full of water. If there's any air in the, in the flow tube itself, we're going to say that there's aeration detected, and we're going to stop measuring-
All right, so if you're talking about like, we fix the water line, and we got air in our system, we are blowing water and air through there. Now, which one should read? Just the water, the little bit of the water that's going through there?
Could be, could be.
Or, or the whole volume of the water?
Yeah, not like a positive displacement meter, if I may. Positive displacement meters do what you're saying, like a, and positive displacement is, uh, you're fine. A positive displacement meter uses many forms of mechanical devices that would do just what you're saying. So, grabbing an old PD chamber out of my bag of tricks.
It's kind of like blowing into a fan.
Yeah.
If you blow on a fan, the fan's going to turn.
So, positive displacement meters have some mechanical device in there that if I use the blow, it's going to turn a magnet that in turn turns the register. What the I Pro does is it eliminates that. It won't turn if air runs through the meter. And by the way, all meters may measure air. It's a part of the problem of, uh, gas meters can measure air or sense that there's air in the line too. What the I Pro does is trying to air in the, if air was found in the water line and the top-of-pipe sensor was to become dry, it's going to stop measuring, giving you that water, so it doesn't measure water inaccurately.
Right. You know, in two thousand seventeen, am I right, Tiffany? Two thousand seventeen, we started replacing our first meters, right?
Yes, we got the first shipment in July of two thousand-
Okay, when did we get our second shipment?
When did we get the second shipment?
We didn't, we couldn't afford all of them right off the bat.
We were buying them kind of like, um, like ten a month.
A box, yeah, like eight to sixteen a month, yeah.
So, you know, what's the difference between that first meter that we got versus our last meter that we got?
Could be some, could be some differences. The product is always changing and evolving.
Because that's eight years difference, you know?
Maybe I'm missing a question. When you say change, what do you mean? Change in accuracy?
Yeah.
Design, zero. No change in design or anything?
No, there's probably been some enhancements made, uh, as related to any, any issues of, uh, component availabilities or materials availabilities, and then also just updating the firmware of different reading technologies. So, the reading technologies are constantly in flux and changing. So, but by all means, any product design has many revisions of changes that occur. If you buy a brand-new Chevrolet pickup truck, it's twenty nineteen model, six months later, they may have additional versions that make that same pickup truck a model better than the one you purchased.
And I, I think what's trying to be asked, two thousand nineteen may have a different issue going with it than two thousand twenty-five does. You know, the ones we got eight years ago, is there any difference at all between the two of them that you may be experiencing issues with the older ones in seventeen?
Yeah.
Not with the twenty-fives?
Good question, yeah. If there's ever concern of the accuracy of the meter, the very first approach is contact your utility provider. The meter stores hourly or every other hour data, so it can be extracted, and that's just stored in like a SIM card inside the PC-printed circuit board of the meter. But if there's a concern of the accuracy of the meter, by all means, we encourage you to have the meter tested.
So, so with that being said, what do y'all charge us to test the meters?
We don't test meters.
I think, I think you did it yourself. Alyssa did it.
I'm saying if we, if they send them in, because we're being told, I think, seventy or seventy-five bucks, we got to pay if it's not faulty.
Yeah, I think what we did when Hennessy asked us about accuracy testing, we pointed them to Emmy Simpson, which is a third-party testing and measurement company, has no, no affiliation with census or any other meter manufacturer. And, uh, I seen the invoice, um, from one of your citizens. I think it was seventy-eight dollars is what Hennessy charged.
Yeah.
Uh, was charged for that test.
So, the, uh, I'd stop, there's no questions about that. Um, when you all, when we pulled the data for the thirty days or whatever, will it tell you if you had an alarm at all during that thirty days? Or just that the alarm is present at that time?
So, it'll look, there's a couple ways alarms can be. An alarm can either be current and active, or the alarm can be historical, that the alarm condition was met once in the past thirty-day period. So, it'll store up to thirty days of alarm history, but, or it's current.
So, what's the hundred and twenty days that you guys say that it's on here?
That's on the I Pro Plus that was started shipping, Jeff, October.
Mm-hmm.
What they did in the I Pro Plus, um, is like Hennessy, you guys bill one month in the rears. So, meter readings to look at if a continuous flow event, we need to be able to go back into the meter, you know, at minimum seventy-five days to get back there. So, what the I Pro Plus introduced was one, um, the two changes in the I Pro Plus is adding another digit to the serial number because we ran out of eight-digit numbers, manufactured that many meters, and then number two was we increased the SIM card memory, the memory capacity of the register itself to offer a hundred and twenty days of hourly.
So, in the past thirty days, if we have a leak, because these meters have leak detection, if you go and pull that data, it will tell you, hey, you had a leak in the last thirty days.
Yeah. Great point. And look how leak detection works, and it, it's awesome, often misinterpreted. We use the word continuous flow. So, what the meter is looking, the I Pro is looking from an alarm condition standpoint, is looking for a period where the meter has never stopped turning for a twenty-four-hour period. As long as that condition has occurred, I have a continuous flow event. Once the condition stops and the continuous flow for twenty-four hours stops, then it just stores the alarm, it's historical, and on thirty-one days, it'll fall off.
Yeah. So, I'm, my point is when we're calling and griping, like, hey, this water bill, we're going to be told, well, you probably have a leak. If we had a leak, you should be able to pull the last thirty days, say, hey, you had a leak.
Yeah, I will, I want to continue down questions, but I think the path of an AMI solution is going to empower them to be proactive and responsive within a twenty-four-hour period, and I'll show that to you.
I understand the accuracy of your, you know, devices. So, if, like, if people have a plumber and they check their end, and that plumber says you don't have a leak, what do you think the problem is?
Yeah, that's a tough one, right? So-
It is.
Yeah, and I can't define that. All I can define is, you know, be presented with the data and the extracts from the meter itself. What, where that water went, I, I can't say. All I can do is represent that this water has measured this much, this many gallons of water has ran through that mir, meter, and inspect the data and the alarm information that's presented at that time.
It seems like there's a lot of discrepancy, you know, and, and I'm not blaming anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, because here's where I have the problem is, you know, all of a sudden at one o'clock at night, the water kicks on, and we go through a hundred and sixty-two gallons an hour for maybe two days, and all of a sudden it shuts off to zero.
Sure.
And then, again, at one o'clock at night, it kicks on again.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sixty, and I'm not that regular, you know? You know what I'm saying? So, you know, it just, it just puzzles me.
Yeah.
You know, how, all of a sudden, it's, it's instant, you know, and we go through a hundred and sixty-two gallons. And by the way, I'll just let you know, I, I know a little bit about water flow, I, I, you know, uh, so, uh, I know if when water pressure's low, I ain't shooting a hundred and sixty-two gallons the same when it's low as it is high. It's either going, it's either going flush weight or it ain't.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? So, how's it stay accurate, a hundred and sixty-two gallons an hour when water pressure's low? Certain times of day, you know, everybody comes home, you know, takes showers at night, you know, getting the kids ready to go bed, so water pressure drops a little bit, and I ain't saying a whole bunch, but then all of a sudden, at one, two o'clock in the morning, when everybody's asleep, now we got good water pressure again.
Yes, sir. That's right.
You know, so we can get our full rate, you know? So, how's that, how's that, the water meter stays consistent of a hundred and sixty-two gallons or a hundred and forty gallons, you know, of that?
Yeah, it's just, it's the dynamic of the consistency of the water distribution system that runs.
I mean-
You know, a lot of homes, as soon as, you know, you may have, you may have three-quarter inch service at the meter, and you run three-quarter inch line up to the home, but as soon as you get to the home, you don't have any fittings that are three-quarter inch. One of the plumbing diameter vol, your ice makers, your toilet stools, three-eights.
Yeah.
So, and, and that's to nominalize, when they, when they reduce the diameter of that, it's to reduce the flow rate, increase the pressure, anomalize a sustained flow rate.
Yeah, also goes, you know, because, you know, everybody says you must have left the toilet running. So, I'll go by my house, for example. I got one inch line all the way into my house. I go up my walls, down my toilet, near, near my walls to my toilet, I got a half inch, uh, half inch to three-eights, once it goes into my toilet.
Right.
And that little hose coming out there, that's an eighth-inch hose.
Absolutely.
You know, so you're telling me I'm putting a hundred and sixty-two gallons through that little hole? An hour?
Yeah, so-
Yeah. You want to speak on that?
In an hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what most plumbing fixtures are, and again, you could look at your plumbing fixture, find out what the gallons per minute flow rate is based off of the pressure. So, we take into account, measure the pressure of your home at that point, and what the, what the flow rate is of your toilet stool, and then that could give you what the maximum gallons per minute could be if that pressure was sustained.
I did that, ninety gallons an hour.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, you know, I'm just going by what complaints I have at, so.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
You know, so I, the only person I can go by is my stuff, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, I can't go into Cory's house, I can't go into Kelly's house, can't go into, uh, Ashley's house and say, let, let me study everything you got here.
Yeah.
You know, because I'm not a licensed plumber. I just know what I got in my stuff, you know, so. And that's, and that's the only question that I got, you know? How's it vary? Because, you know, because one of the complaints is, first thing we say, run the toilet. Somebody left the sink running, you know, blah, 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 you know? Uh, you know, even in your guys' pa, uh, paper says, you know, or your stuff that I Googled, the biggest part that we have had, we've had these old junk meters in our system for, you know, fifty-some years. Now, all of a sudden, we put nice meters in our deal, so it's going to take a while for these meters to, you know, for people to accept these new meters, because they're going to check a better volume than the old meters.
Sure, absolutely.
So, you know, so, and that's the part that you got to get, that we have to, you know, explain to our people, why are all of a sudden we reading better, you know? you know, explain to our people, why are all of a sudden we reading better, you know?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, are these gonna be accurate, you know? You're, it's gonna be hard, cause, you know, I spent fifty thousand dollars on a computer, I'm in the wireline business also. I spent fifty thousand dollars on a computer and when I got it in here and got it installed in my truck, it didn't work. I had to send in fifty thousand dollars before they put that computer in my truck and I had to send it back. It's just a little diode that's screwed up. You know what I'm saying? So I know there can be failure.
Absolutely. Every product has that.
So, you know, and I'm, you're telling me that we have a one point, uh, point five deal. You know, I study overall, you know, it's one to three percent failure in the meters. So we have eleven hundred meters in our town, right? So one percent, however you wanna look, there's still one point one, or however you wanna look at it, faulty meters that month. You might not have one, none in one month, but you might have certainly three the following month, you know? You know, so how do we justify for that? You know, uh, when, when you're sitting here telling us our meters are perfect, you know? Uh, you know, our state says that we should only, you know, your accuracy has gotta be one point five negative or positive.
That's correct.
You know, so then how do we explain ourselves, you know?
Yeah, the best thing to, if when disputes or questions are done, the best thing you can do has a certified meter test performed. That's, that's, that's step number one. Step number one, of course, would be utilizing the tools that Hennessy has, pulling the data, looking for something, and if, if there's a, uh, an, a statement of, no, my toilets are perfectly fine, I just changed everything, then the very next step is to have the meter test performed.
Yeah.
To check accuracy.
Yeah, I, at our last meeting, my sister, she had a six hundred dollar water bill and she did everything like you're supposed to do. She had her better meter read, but I also told her to call a plumber. Well, she's handicapped, she couldn't get underneath her hat. She had a water leak underneath there. So, you know, so, so it works both ways, but, you know, so you have to have, we have to have it consistent on ourselves and our meet, know that our meters are there and, you know, and what we're talking about, instead of just saying, well, call it, you know, you got a stool leaking or you got, somebody left the faucet running, or, you know, you got underground leak, you know? You know, so, you know, until I started reading about these meters, I didn't know there was a deal that they could go out and check and show that there's a leak, that you could show a leak.
Yeah, so.
You know?
And it, it doesn't find a leak, uh, and then all of this is semantically. The, what it does report is if the meter has run continuously, non-stop for a twenty-four-hour period, then it'll report a continuous consumption. Now, whatever caused that, if that was a leak or if that was a faucet turned on, a faucet turned on isn't necessarily a leak versus a break in a water line. So it's just semantics, but that's, that's what we're reporting is continuous flow down to twenty-seven hundredths of a gallon and it never stopped turning for a twenty-four-hour period.
So.
And any leak's gonna do that.
Okay, so who is that reported to?
The meat, right now, currently, the meter documents that and you can see it in the interval data. Again, if you get the interval data extract, you can see where there's been hourly consumption going through the meter.
That's only if you request a field test, right?
Absolutely.
So it's not, it's not, they're not being notified in the office, right?
That's correct. The only time the meters are sampled for alarm or continuous consumption event is when the readings are collected.
But no one knows until they get their six hundred dollar bill.
Understood. What I do want to is when I show you the AMI system that Hennessy is looking at, investing into, it will do that for you. Because again, the radios will communicate to the towers, report their readings every single hour, and they'll be, have, have storage of all the consumption every hour for the past three years. Conditional reporting can be run every day to look for continuous flow events every morning, and then inspections can be delivered out through service orders out in the field to be proactive. So the first condition must be met is a meter run non-stop for a twenty-four-hour period. After that, now reporting can be done and service can be investigated in the field. And Kelly, in your instance, you know, if we could've, if that could've been reported within one day, that'd be better than multiple days of continuous flow.
I just think that, um, we just need to install our own meters on the inside of our line. Personally, I think that's what I'm gonna do.
As accountability.
Just so I can avoid it, because it doesn't matter if you all are not gonna take any fault whatsoever. You, you won't, won't admit any kind of fault, neither will the city. And so my question is actually to the board members, um, if I install my own meter on my side of, of your, of your meter, are you gonna take my reading or are you gonna take your reading?
We're still gonna take our reading.
So if you're.
Because we're, we're custody on that.
So if yours measures higher and my meter is that, that close to your meter, you're gonna take yours and not mine?
Because I know what our meter is and I have no idea what yours is. Yes, and we're gonna be consistent about that. We're gonna measure our meter.
An example of that might be is if you take a gallon per minute meter and take it to the gas station and put that meter on their, on the gas nozzle and fill your vehicle up with twenty gallons. Your meter said twenty gallons, but the gas station pump said that, that you pumped twenty-five gallons. Probably gonna charge you the twenty-five gallons.
Exactly, but those, those gas pumps are checked every month.
Absolutely.
And they do, and they write it on their, on their, on the gas.
Certified test.
They are a variance of either in negative four to positive five, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have that with these meters?
Yeah, a recommendation that I made to Hennessy was to have a certain population of meters sampled and tested. Uh, and that way you can identify if there's accuracy issues going on with the meter population. And that's just good.
By the time that they disable the meter, pick it up and send it in for the seventy-eight dollar and thirty cent, uh, test, who knows what can happen through jiggling and all this kinda stuff? I still don't buy the fact that they are, that they're faultless. I never will. Sorry. I'm just not going to. I, I, we can go buy eleven hundred computers and I promise you, there's gonna be ten percent of them that don't work for some reason or another. And you, you're selling computers and what you're selling. They just measure water. It's, it's all the same. But you, you all claim that your meters are faultless, as does the city.
So, so the meters go through the testing that they're required to go through, just like every other meter that we would buy. This is, this meets the same specs that, that every town and every utility has to follow. So I, I don't, um, that, you know, we're, we're following the guidelines in which we're given in order to purchase this meter. Now, what we're trying to do is get a better system in place to where we can see issues ahead of time, rather than when those, we get those large bills. Now, these meters, I mean, from my experience, these meters are, so they're, they're good meters. It's a good technology, um, in, in my experience.
So you don't accept any fault of any kind, like there can't be one percent of the population that has, that has had an issue?
So where are you seeing this one to three number that I keep hearing? I haven't read anything about a one to three percent that meters are faulty. He just said it's point zero five.
That's, that's right. That's what he said.
That's, that's coming from the manufacturer who's, who's got a much larger sample system.
Meters anyway. They sold you the meters. They're, of course, they're perfect. They're perfect. But what I'm saying is that there is still, there still is fault. There still is fault. Maybe I was the only one that month that had an issue. Maybe I was one of three, maybe I was one of six. But that still is a low percentage for, uh, a popu- or for eleven hundred meters.
I, I.
Still, it's gonna get you down into the, into that low.
I don't, I don't know that, I, I don't know, understand the, what, what you're trying to say here. You're, 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 you're trying to tell me that this meter messed up and you're convinced of this meter messed up and that water did not flow through your meter?
When I had absolutely, like, I, I had two people that rented from me that weren't even there every day. I had.
So you had a vacant building with no one around to know if toilets were running or anything was happening?
Around. I was.
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to un- understand what you're saying here.
Two renters that were not there every day. I was there just every day.
Okay.
Okay? I can hear from where I'm at, because I had the rest of the toilets shut off, since you all think that I have a toilet problem. I had all the rest of the toilets turned off. I had three toilets on. I'm sitting right next to one and can hear the next one, which is right behind my desk.
Sorry.
The other one is in another room.
Okay.
There was no hundred and sixty-one gallons of water going through a toilet twenty-four seven from October fourth to October thirtieth. I can assure you, it was non-stop.
So did we have an accuracy, a third-party test on this meter?
Well, I have a field test that shows October fourth to October thirtieth, a hundred and sixty-one gallons going through an hour, every hour.
So what did the third-party accuracy test say?
I mean, it came back accurate within the parameters.
Oh, this is the one that we sent, we sent off?
Okay.
But what could they excuse me for a hundred and sixty-one gallons an hour?
I have no idea.
No, it, but, a hundred and sixty gallons an hour divided by sixty minutes per second is two point six-six gallons per minute.
Which is.
Most fixtures.
Water is wide open.
Yeah. Most, mo- it is a large flow.
Yeah, like not running to the toilet, right?
I don't, I think it is, yes, at those flow rates with anywhere between forty-five to fifty PSI.
So I believe we did.
Our water is not forty-five to fifty PSI.
It is.
What would we bet?
I can vouch for that because.
I can vouch for that because we tested fire hydrants annually and the static was always. We were. Static, okay?
I'll put a pressure gauge on tomorrow. I have no problem. I've already, I've already put an inline meter on and in eight days, it's like ninety-two gallons off already, that your old meter's higher than mine. And that just, I said, that's, I feel like it, you know, that's just, it's inaccurate, you know, but.
I mean, what's the explanation for that? I can see maybe being five gallons off or whatever.
Gauge, but I'm telling you, I've ran city water out at the freaking plant more than anybody in this building. You know, we ran a cooling tower. I know the conductivity fluctuates, the, the chlorine majorly fluctuates. You could always tell on Friday that we jacked the chlorine system up, cause nobody's gonna be there during the weekends, which chlorine, uh, conductivity pH all run together, the phosphates, none of that is consistent in this town. And I guarantee that, cause I ran water tests twice a day on the city water. And our, and our city water pressure was damn sure not fifty to sixty PSI, but I will prove that tomorrow, cause I will put a pressure gauge on.
So I will tell the board members that we, there was, um, we reached out to several customers to go and visit them, um, to let, um, TJ and Jeff or TJ, um, go and visit them and check out their specific location so that they could speak at their location. And the only one that met with, with them was, um, was Kelly. So they're only gonna speak to Kelly's situation because they were not, um, they did not go and check.
I was at work, I'm a travel nurse and he was also, cause the plant was having issues. He can't leave the plant, so. But I'm just saying why they can't. Saying, you can't say that nobody was open, because we did open our home, but due to work circumstances, we weren't available.
Yeah.
I was just saying that they cannot speak to your situation because they were not able to go check.
Well, you kinda started that off with, we offered, we offered a day and a half ahead of time to notice, uh, but, and on a Wednesday, but whatever. Like, it is what it is. Like, it's pretty obvious, I said, even that a point five percent, you're still talking seven, eight people in town, right? If that's monthly, you're gonna have seven, eight people near bitching, cause their meter, they don't feel like their meter's right. And I don't understand when y'all did replace my meter, why I got a meter with seven thousand seven gallons while you ran to them. And I think I actually had last night, but that don't make sense. Wh- where was that meter at? If it was only two years old.
They're good for twenty years, twenty years.
Yeah, like, y'all obviously pulled it off something else. We were not up to capacity on meters, so where did that meter come from? Was it a faulty meter before that we sent it in, it's faulty, got fixed, and we brought it back for a purpose?
So it's not uncommon for utility to pull meters for not, for no service?
But not when we're not up to capacity with them yet, cause we still have not filled the town quota, so why did we have used meters sitting on?
Yeah, I can't, I certainly couldn't speak on that.
Thank you, how, maybe?
What, what we do see is there is field product that gets pulled from the field and put on a shelf and then set at somewhere, some other location at some time. That's a typical.
Well, I understand that if everybody here had one of the meters that were, what our goal was meant, but it wasn't meant at that point.
Yeah, I can't speak toward that specifically.
Is Kelly's meter, I mean, she's, is the business, is her meter different than Cory's? Cause it, she's commercial, you know?
Not if it's this one, this is a.
It's an iPearl meter, so the iPearl meter, um, defining a commercial or residential is kind of a tricky thing. It's all what the meter size is. So, uh, you know, we've got some three-quarter inch iPearls, which is what Kelly's got that feeds a car wash, which Kelly's business would never use that volume, because there's no moving parts, there's no head pressure in the iPearl meter. You can, you could sustain those maximum flow rates. But typically, commercial meters are inch and a half and larger, and those would be a different technology, not the iPearl, would have a moving turbine in there. Uh, but so far, that's not what we have been questioned at this point.
So we basically don't have no commercial meters, right?
No, you got several two-inch, uh, twos and threes and fours. Not, not several, but the largest population is the iPearl. Three-quarter inch or one-inch sets, right, Alyssa?
Yes.
I have a question. I, I'm really interested in water meters, but why would Kelly have a water meter that can support a car wash when she doesn't have a car wash?
Yeah, so the technology, in these days, this meter, when it was a moving part, it basically measures the volume of water that comes in and spins, spins a device and turns a magnet. So the flow rate to the meters could be between a quarter gallon to twenty gallons per minute. That was the optimum nominal range of the five-eighths by three-quarter meter design. Uh, with the iPearl meters and solid-state meter as a whole, doesn't have these components in there, so you don't have the head pressure. That allows for more flow rates and more accuracy. There's no moving parts to wear out over time. So what the iPearl does is can measure down to twenty-seven hundredths gallon, all the way to thirty-five gallons per minute. The head loss pressure, uh, head pressure is fifteen PSI on a mechanical meter, whereas the iPearl is half of that, is seven point one-two-five. So, um, the idea of Kelly having a, a car wash meter, just it, it's capable. In older meters and older technologies, we had a bunch of different metering lines to submit those different flow rate characteristics. What the iPearl does is it satisfies many flow characteristic needs with this technology.
So let me ask you, as, as the meter gets bigger up to a two-inch, does the range for, uh, failure get wider? Not for the meter failure, I mean, I'm saying like the measure being, being off more.
So I only took a snapshot of the iPearl, which is manufactured in five-eighths through one inch. So I didn't take a snapshot of.
And I did look at two, but I'm pretty sure it changed a little bit, didn't it? The, like, the percentage of how much it can be off from the.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, so, the, the, yeah, the one inch, so five-eighths through, thank you, thank you, Jeff. The, the five-eighths through the, um, three-quarter inch, they, they have the same flow rate ranges. And the one inch, it's still twenty-seven hundredths a gallon, it goes to a tenth of a gallon on the low flow side. And then on the high flow side, it goes to fifty-five gallons per minute. So an iPearl meter is gonna be twenty-seven hundredths of a gallon to twenty-five gallons per minute intermittent high flow. And a one-inch iPearl is point one gallons up to fifty-five gallons per minute. And that's just because the, the diameter of the flow tube is increased.
Yeah.
So you are correct. Now, sizes above that, inch and a half and larger, those are different, those are different technologies that, uh, are not in dispute at this point.
But you said hers is a two-inch?
No.
Oh, okay.
Fi- uh, three-quarter inch meter.
Okay.
Christian.
Please.
New system be modified where if there's an excessive water flow that the owner is notified immediately?
So right now, the answer is yes. Right now, in the solution that we're, we're speaking to Hennessy about buying is a, is an AMI metering, where all the readings come to towers and the data is stored every single hour for three years. As far as customer-facing access to that data, there are many, what we call, we call that a customer portal app, and there are many different applications that are third-party, that can be plugged in, that then you can access your meter readings from the data and be able to view it on your phone. Much like, um, Canadian Electric probably provides for outage notification through their apps.
So the owner's not notified, the owner has to check?
So different customer portal applications can be set up different thresholds. So you could perhaps, and Kelly, this would be neat for, if you knew your offices were gonna be vacant for two weeks, you could set a threshold that says, if any water runs through my meter whatsoever, I want a text message immediately. So you can set periods of time for notifications and thresholds for set dates and time range. Or overall, if you're always at home and you wanna look for nothing more than continuous flow, we, we see that feature used a lot in like lake homes or seasonal homes, where people are moving in and out. Uh, it's not occupied all the time, but that, that's third. But tha- that's third-party technology. The idea to provide that, though, is to be able to collect the data every single hour. The key to making, getting you real-time data at your fingertips is be able to capture the information on an hourly interval and report and design thresholds to report on so that you could be notified, because all you're really doing in an alarm is setting a conditional threshold. If my meter runs two gallons per minute to twenty gallons per minute, I wanna be notified that that's a high-flow event. Or if I wanna be notified it's an eighth of a gallon.
When you say notify, the property owner has, is not notified, the property owner has checking.
Can I answer him a different way?
Sure, Jeff.
So, um, so current system is drive-by or touch-read, right? So we don't know you have a continuous flow there until they go read, that's every thirty days, right? So with the new AMI system, they're reading continuously. So in the mornings, if you've got a continuous flow, or you, or leave, whatever you wanna call it, the next day, they're gonna get an alert that says, this customer has a continuous flow.
Yeah, can you say they are gonna get an alert, are you talking about the town?
The utility.
City will get an alert that says, hey, uh, Mr. Smith, I'm not sure where your name is, but, uh, he had a, he had a continuous flow condition last night. The leak can then contact you, say, hey, Mr. Smith, we noticed last night your water ran online.
So there's not an app that we can download to watch or, um, is that, is that the system that we just purchased?
That, that's, yeah, yeah.
The, the app has come, would come from a third-party, but that is something that we would like to look into. And I think, I think that's, that's where we're trying to get. The more data we can get, the better that this product is gonna be for us. Because I feel like we've got a Ferrari, but we've got a, we've got a governor that we can only do twenty-five miles an hour. So we, we, we have the capabilities of having so much more data and understanding what's going on better with this meter. We're not able to utilize it. You know, I work in the gas industry and I take care of gas meters. If I only seen a reading every thirty days, my job would be a nightmare. And I couldn't imagine that, and I'm sure Corey's in the same boat. I'm looking at hourly data, I'm looking at daily data, I'm looking at this stuff all the time to make sure that we don't have any issues. This is giving us that ability to look at this data, to see if someone's having an issue, and we're gonna be able to fix these problems prior to them being a thirty-day, six-hundred-dollar water bill. You know, you're gonna have a dollar or two difference because we were able to catch it in twenty-four hours and notify you, and we can go and look at the problem immediately, rather than it being forty-five days out, sixty days out, whatever that looks like. We're gonna be able to be proactive, and that's what I think is gonna solve a lot of these problems and a lot of these issues. So, you know, if.
In this system, can the owner, can you modify your system where the owner can be immediately notified by email that there's excessive use?
If we're able to get the third-party app, and that is something that we wanna look into, those capabilities are there, yes. So.
Can I say this? I have been on properties in Hennessy, and always, it's always a tenant that's letting it toward us.
Absolutely, yeah, and we want.
Because I'm immediately notified by email, it's, it can be the fourth of the month, the tenth of the month, the twentieth of the month, I'm immediately notified.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and that's what, that's, that's the place that we wanna get to, and I think that's our goal.
Randy, what mitigates, what mitigates this? If I get a warning or a city call, business, hey, your meter's running.
Mm-hmm.
And I tell you, you're not seeing it, because they don't have anything on.
Yeah.
That's it?
Well, though, that, that, that prompts us to, to investigate more.
Who will?
Well, we got the water department to be able to do that. We also, I mean, it's.
I think that's what the issue is.
That, that is, that is what we wanna be able to come to, but now we're looking for problems that happened thirty or forty-five days ago. And we don't know what happened thirty or forty-five days ago, but I can sometimes remember what happened yesterday. Not all the time, I am getting older, but we, I, I wanna be able to find these problems because if there is a toilet running, if there is a leak, and we can look at these and it's only been running for twenty-four hours, you're not gonna have a, a big change in your water bill. It may be a couple of dollars. Or, you know, we, we wanna be able to see this data, and we wanna, I wanna be able to see this data, and I wanna be able to mitigate these issues and solve these six-hundred-dollar water bills. If it's not being used, I don't wanna pump it on the ground, you know, and, and unless you guys are watering your yard, and that's what you're looking for. That's fine, but I'm, I'm just saying, if we can, if we can get the data in to see whether or not these are, these are real, or if we do have a problem, if we need to send the meters off and have them checked by a third-party, I think, I think what he recommended is a great idea. We go around and we sample a few and we get them checked.
Are you guys reading the numbers, the tallying of bills?
No, we just provide the.
Is that a separate company or is the city doing that?
So.
The town's doing that.
The town does that. Well, the, the, the meter readings are automatically inputted. And I'm.
With the software?
And the software calculates everything, am I correct on that?
Has that been checked? Because I don't know, and I haven't seen it, I've just heard by hearsay, that somebody's sewer bill's higher than a water bill, I don't know how that happened.
Well, that's a, that's a complete different conversation.
They say that their sewer rates are higher than the water rates. That's one thing that they say, then they say something else.
Is your rate higher than the water?
That's because they average the last, or four months of the year, and then that's your whole bill the next following year.
Instead of averaging for the year, which it should be, in my opinion, I think it should be averaged for the whole year, what's your whole year's usage, and then, and then go from, from that, and it's like, all right, your last year, what your whole year was, was it averaged out to be X amount of dollars or however you all average it, as far as, or charge it for units, then that should be your next year's, your next year's average. But they don't do it like that. They just, they, you know, they just pick four months wherever they want to.
No, no.
Okay, the last four months of the year.
When people aren't watering their lawns, so we don't charge you for your sewer rates while your water rates are high.
But why don't, why don't you, but why don't you just average it for the year, because that way you're, you're gonna get that, like during the summer.
Yes, and your sewer rates are gonna go up.
Or, or average your lowest three or your lowest four. Like, my highest water bill all year was February, and that's one of the four months you average. And my, my sewer bill's ninety-eight a month. That's, that's insane.
One of the best practices is seventy percent of your water should be your sewer. I suppose I get back to you, Bert, I did.
It is, um, and, and the reason it's not average for the twelve-month period on the sewer is because pe- it penalizes people who water their lawns, because that water's not going down the sewer and we're not processing that down at the sewer legates. So the, the town board, Wes, I think you were probably even on the board when we voted to, to do that average.
I was hearing it when I was sitting, well, I didn't know what to change, that's why I couldn't figure out how somebody's sewer bill was higher than a water bill. I said, they got a calculation issue somewhere.
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, but.
Has that, has that system been audited? Has that been audited to, to?
What system is that?
Your, your sewer rates system. Is that just done by hand, or is that done by actual calculation?
It's done inside the software. It's done, the software does the calculation.
The software does the calculation?
And yes, I, I mean, the, we get a yearly audit and they pick things out, and I don't know, um, specifically if that has been one of the things selected or not. So I can't answer that question.
But you also can't answer the question too when, um, Sherry has had a, an outrageous water bill with like three hundred gallons an hour in the middle of the night in a vacant house. Um, she has a plumber who looked at everything, there was no issues whatsoever. She did everything she was supposed to do, and you all stand behind like, well, you, you ran the water through there.
And we're looking at a policy to, to possibly work on those things too. But it's not, it's not prepared tonight. Tonight was us talking about this water meter specifically, and so I don't wanna get too far off the topic, and we got these gentlemen's time, and, and I wanna, I wanna, uh, I wanna kind of bring us back in here, but, um, you know, we have a lot of questions about the, the water meter itself, and I would like to, uh, I'd like to try to stay on topic. We can, we can circle back to these at our next meeting, but, um.
The meters we got now, the updated meters?
Yes.
Are they reading electronically like that?
Yes, yes, they are. And it goes directly into the software. There's no, there's no input, inputting those numbers, yes. And so the new system that we're trying to do, and, and he's got a, a presentation that's gonna show us. Right, it'll automatically go into the office. There will no longer be anyone having to drive around to read the meters unless they're not communicating, in which case we need to be troubleshooting those to begin with. But what we're, what we're trying to get to is, is, is to see more data. Because once every thirty days is not enough data to accurately diagnose issues if we have it or on either side of that meter. And so I, I just, I feel like that a lot of these issues that, that, you know, we're being brought to, we'll be, we'll be able to solve with this, so.
Back to Wes's question, though, has the software been reviewed lately? Like, has anybody came out and checked the software for the sewage? Because like, he already consumes a lot unless he's burning a bunch of water, using a bunch of water. I mean, has it been checked lately? Honestly, it's a legit question.
So the software, it takes, it, it automatically, um, runs a, a process where it lists everybody's usage for November, December, January, February, and then it averages those three months and gives you an average. It also gives you a report if there's any fluctuations, high fluctuations between the previous year and, you know, and the current year. So then, um, we do go through that because it could be that somebody, we, and if anybody has a leak during those months, we noted on their account because it may be that that leak caused their water to go up, and we go in and we manually adjust those down. So.
So my sewer jumped twenty-five dollars this time, this year. Like, it went from seven, seventy-two, I think it was, I got there ninety-three now, ninety-eight, so why was that not caught? And that's, that's a damn near twenty-five percent difference.
Did, did you have a leak or anything?
No, no, I've, no, I've been, I've been up and down this road a hundred times, but no.
But see, those are the only ones that we, those are the only ones that we.
If I did, when you all pulled your thirty-day deal, it should've told you.
I think I can take a picture from the company, how they came out and like did a test to make sure everything's, you know, eyes and nose.
They update our program, because we're, we're on a server farm, and they update our program what, about every three months?
I think that's my biggest gripe, is everything is, you got a leak. When you all pulled the thirty-day data, it will tell you in that thirty days if there was a leak, present in that thirty days.
I just asked if you had a leak during that time, because if it would have noted it.
You should've known if I did. He, he just said on the third, when you all pull your thirty-days data, it will tell you in that thirty days if you had a continuous run for twenty-four hours.
Or it drops off the third first day.
Yeah, like, I'm trying to figure out why, if you had a leak, like, that is the answer, is you, did you have a leak? No, y'all would've known if we did. You should've been the one telling us.
Well, so we don't currently get that daily data. All we get is the.
No, not daily, third, thirty days, when you pull the meter.
Thirty days, right, but it just shows, it just shows a continuous flow. It doesn't show.
That's a leak, Randy.
I understand what you're saying.
So you should've called and said, hey, you had seven days here, continuous flow, you had a leak.
We don't see the daily data now, when we pull it. We just see an accumulated data.
Randy, when you all pull our meter every month to bill us, he is telling you, it will tell you in that last thirty days if it ever flagged.
Right, and I'm telling you right now that we're not pulling that thirty-day, we're pulling an accum. We're looking at one number. This was your number last month, this is your number this month.
You're only getting a reading.
We're only getting a reading. We're not pulling that data unless it's requested.
Unless you said, I think I've got a leak.
Sorry, we're, we're, we're talking, we're talking the same language, we're just, we're not listening, or you know what I mean?
I was like, I'll make sure that you guys are.
Yeah.
But I have had three field tests done in the last year, and it's never flagged, like, I've never had a continuous flow over, you know, I've never had a continuous flow at all, so.
Okay.
Corey, I got a question for you. You said your sewer's running ninety-eight a month?
Yeah.
Can I ask what your water's running?
What's what?
How much of your water bill's running?
Um, February was two-forty.
But that's sewer, is that everything or just water?
I'm, I was trying because I was like the one-sixty, one-seventy mark, and everybody I talked to was like, whoa, you're way high. So y'all last September replaced the meter, now I'm like one-ninety to two-forty. Like, it, it literally, it, I had a tip, or a Shelley pull my last twelve months. Like, I'm like right there consistently above two-hundred, two-hundred dollars averaging basically. And I have a water well, I know everybody, I got beautiful green grass, I know it, but I got a water well. I, I even unhooked the water hoses out front and back like four months ago, because make sure nobody was turning them things on. So I just don't, I said, I don't get how, and my biggest gripe is, how did I get a water meter replacement that already had seven thousand gallons already? Where did that meter come from that we use, we put a used meter on there?
I can't answer that, but it does sound like a lot of flow. Of course, I don't know how many you've got in your household, but.
So we, we moved one out in January, and there was, there's literally no.
In January, and it went up in February.
My next ice month, like, it just, it's crazy, and my lines are in the ceiling, so I know I don't have a leak or I'd have a, a bad problem. I'm just saying, like, been in this industry, there is a small percentage of failures in these, and it's literally for the population, this, this is a small percentage of people that's griping about it, but. And I, I really think in-house, we ought to have some way to test these meters ourselves without having to send them away, you know?
We do, don't we?
We're working on that, working on something like that.
We don't have it, yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is also something that I've discussed with.
It's been small. Small test batch, sure.
Yeah, there's several ways we could work with your utility thinking of different, different ideas, test meters, kind of poor man test, and even more accurate.
Trying to think why somebody that's close where they could, Alyssa, could you?
Yeah, the, the, I mean, I'm just, a very easy way, Alyssa, is measure five gallons of water, measure the weight of the five gallons of water. Run five gallons of water through the meter itself at different flow speeds. If you got a garden hose that you're running the water, run it at a slow flow rate, measure the weight, look at the reading of the meter. And that's, that's a really easy, poor man's way of measuring. Now, there's more specifics when it comes to running tests. We gotta run hundred gallons of water through the iPearl to flush all the, you know, so it can be calibrated and be measured correctly. And, but there's easy ways to do testing that I can help you with. And other than, the best by far is a certified meter test. It's backed and.
But at least that way, if she feels like there is a discrepancy, then.
Go to the next level, go to the next level. That's, I think that's a good idea.
I think state statute says that the person that's sending the meter off can request to be there.
I, I don't know if there's a state statute for meter testing.
Yeah, I think there is, uh, but we, we had it at the last meeting, but.
I don't know where the lab is, but I'm sure they're welcome to go.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll praise, I'll praise you.
As far as I can, it goes off the lonely.
Florida. Yeah, but, you know, the biggest problem is that we have, we put in new meters in our town. You know, our policy of, is, that we have on books, or however you wanna say it, about testing and all that, has not been updated with our meters. So we kinda got caught with our pants down, you know, now we're gonna have, the board is going to have to rewrite a policy to adapt to our meter systems that we got now. You know, so that's kind of the easiest way to say that, you know, so, you know, uh, you know, we, we're going from meters that were probably installed in the seventies when we wrote our policy up. So now we got to update our policy that we got now to go with our meters that, that we got. We got a lot of money invested in these meters now, you know, we approved the antenna, you know, the, the, you know, the next step that, that we're gonna have to look at is the apps, you know, if, if we want the apps on, because we already approved the meters to be read in the office every day, so. You know, but now we got to kind of do our policy change to these meters, and that's the biggest thing. Hey, guys, you caught us with our pants down, you know, I meant we were on, you know, uh, some of our, however you wanna say it, it, it wasn't perfect, you know? But we got to, we got to go on, move forward and adjust our policy to, to our meters that we have.
And the old PD meters, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but the old PD meters, as they wear out, they go into the, um, favor of the customer.
That's right.
So, so as they wear out, the water bills are gonna go less, and now that we replaced the meters, they're back up again.
Yeah.
And so that also plays a factor into those things as well, so. But, um, TJ, you.
If I can pivot, if.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'll show you what the idea is, to be able to get notified proactively instead of thirty days later after a large water bill is done, just logging into a live system right now.
Are you talking to the town members, or are you talking to citizens?
To the town. Town.
I'd be more interested in the citizens.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the customer portal app to show you. This starts with the foundation. So a customer portal app first starts with the foundation of a network. We've got to get the antenna up, we've got to get the base station up, we've got to get all the radios installed, we've got to get everything migrated from once a month reading to every four hours, it's gonna be sending the readings. The tower system's gotta be up. The tower system's gotta be up. So, but your, your customer portal app will look, and there's several of them out there. It'll look similar. There's only, I don't care if you're in gas meter world, you're electric meter world, the data looks very similar.
But we're gonna have to have the town board approve this portal for the customers, correct?
We've got a lot of options to look at, and it's something we've discussed, they're gonna bring to us our options, and then we can figure out what best fits the town. Or if the cost is is worth it, I don't know what that cost looks like at this point.
I would think the cost would probably outweigh the headaches that Tiffany and Shelley get daily.
Yeah, and and that's what I say, but I, I don't want to say, yes, we're gonna do it, and then it costs a hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, that's obviously not gonna work, so. It's something that we want to look into and we got to make sure that it's worth it and we'll have enough participation that. People aren't, cause you know, somebody's gonna have to pay for it and tax dollars is the only way, so. We gotta be, you know, frugal with making sure that it's it's worth it at the end of the day, so.
Are you saying that when you put this new system in, convert, um, that there'll be incremental costs for all the features? Additional features, like sending an email to the customer, or or do you just get a package?
So at this point, we've, we've approved the the tower and the the meter reading, um, the the radio system itself. Um, but the the app access is an add-on, it's a third party. The actual company that manufactures doesn't offer this. And so we've got to look at other options as far as that. There's, there's several that will work. We've just got to look at the options and what works best for our situation. So, so that's something we still have to do some investigating on. And main thing focused right now is to get the system in place, and then we can see what our options are going forward, so. Um, it's kind of a, uh, get it in steps, kind of like we had to do with the water meters themselves, so. I think, but it's definitely something that we want to, we want to at least uh investigate and and uh check into, so.
I appreciate your all time.
You got it. So to go back and let's get our mind wrapped around an AMI system. Think about the the radio that's in your meter can. So right now, it's, it's listen, it doesn't talk. So what it's doing is it's waiting for a list to come by with the reading equipment. Once every thirty days, wakes up and it passes her the current reading. That's all that's communicated to her in any alarm condition that may have been met currently or in the past thirty days. So it's only captured once. When the towers go up, the base station goes up and the system goes online. One of the first things we do is we send an over-the-air message to migrate the endpoints from a walk-by, drive-by solution to a fixed-base solution. That command turns on other features in the radio that you've purchased. And that turns on an algorithm that the the radio will wake up and sample the water meter every single hour. So now the, now the radio becomes a collection point capturing hourly readings. Every fourth hour, it sends the current hour reading. And seven days worth of hourly data. The reason we do seven days worth of hourly data is let's say you parked on top of your meter can. Well, the radio. But tomorrow you drove away from it, so I can backfield the data. So that's what this looks like in the AMI system. As far as finding continuous flow, and I know that's hard for you to see, being in the community center, there's no, no way to project this. But if you look, these are, this is a a view between thirty days of consumption, but I have every single hour. The orange represents no water being used and the blue represents how much water ran through in that one hour interval. So you can zoom in, look at twelve months, look at monthly, look at weekly, look at daily, look at hourly, for a three-year period in time. And the system will report, like in this customer, you can see here that that blue line is representing, it never went to orange, the orange is gone. And down below, there's a little purple, as I scroll down there, that purple indicates. That there's been a continuous flow. Now I can zoom in and I can see what the continuous flow was. And see the hours of consumption that occurred that met the parameters that the meter ran non-stop. Now that that's being collected every four hours, the the update time of a continuous flow opportunity can be communicated and reported. To the utility staff within a four-hour window, not a once every thirty days.
If this software is approved or whatever is purchased, are all the meters already capable of getting the reading to a tower? Or do things have to be attached to these meters to get a reading?
So I think you're at fifty percent have radios and the other fifty percent are touch reading. So uh there's still fifty percent of the town have the radio devices ready to go. The others still have the touchpad. Where they have to put the gun on top of it. So that would need radio.
That touchpad, is that on top of the lid?
Yes.
So if that touchpad isn't there and the wire's been pulled completely out of it, how do you read that meter?
The touchpad has to be replaced or you read the meter manually.
Interesting.
There is a cable, say you moan over top of the touchpad. So there's a, you can unsnap the cable on top of the meter and put a new cable that'll come, that you would then install a new touchpad. Yes, sir. Or do nothing and open the meter can lid and read the meter manually.
Yeah, that happens a lot.
So is the city gonna purchase for all of the meters to be read by the tower? Is that the plan?
I believe we've already approved that.
Yes, okay.
So.
I apologize, my hearing is poor, but you said we have to put a touchpad, this device that radios to the tower. On top of the water.
Meter can.
Plate.
Yes, the water meter lid, that's right.
I know Marshall has that system and they've had trouble with.
Yeah, there there are many.
Those things get knocked off by kids and rod lowers and whatever.
Yeah, how many touchpads do you da, do you replace for damages a year ballpark out of your six hundred that you have so far?
Twenty, thirty.
Yeah, so it's a, it's, it is a possibility. There are ways when touchpads get damaged, they make different meter lid options. Recession options, way to protect that device. Again, you gotta buy a meter lid to protect it, but there's several, several options to try to protect that investment.
They're not, right, they go under the lid, not on top of the lid, right?
You do.
Some of the lids we have to go under, but it's just a pain.
Otherwise, to take the existing meter lids that you have in town is to cut a hole on the lid and install it. If the cast iron lid will use a plasma cutter, cut an inch and three-quarter inch hole in it. If you're gonna replace the lid. Buy an AMR compat, what we call AMR compatible lid, gotta recess it, but it all comes at a cost.
Sure this is clear, so if if that touchpad is on the outside or the inside of the lid, where you have, you have to physically touch it or walk by to read it. You have to physically, the system we have now, you have to physically look in there and read it.
That's correct, the touchpad is not present.
So if it's plunk full of dirt.
You have to dig it out, like the old ways.
Not read it. Done.
No, I think, I think we got holes in everything now, right? We just, so we'll take the old touchpads out. And the radio goes in the same hole, so you really won't notice a lot of difference.
My next question, kind of going backwards here, guys. What do you think the pressure is south of town? Is it fifty, sixty, seventy PSI, you think? What, what are we thinking it is?
It's around fifty.
Around fifty? How many gallons of water will flow through a three-eighths line with fifty PSI behind it?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, ask ChatGPT, I I don't know the answer. I'm not a hydraulic engineer. No, 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 I'm not being smart, by no means, I don't know that answer.
Five hundred and sixty gallons of hour, uh, of water per hour for thirty plus days.
Say, I'm sorry, say the.
Five hundred and sixty gallons of water per hour.
Yeah, so.
And I wanted to, but that off the point has to be told us, I can think of things.
Just taking five, I'm just taking five sixty-five divided by sixty minutes. That would be nine point four one gallons per hour. Or nine point four one gallons per minute, nine point four one gallons per minute.
So that'd be pretty close.
Be close then.
Yeah, and the meter's rated to accurately measure from twenty-seven hundredths of gallon to twenty-five gallons per minute.
I think definitely that's, you guys are in the right, you know, stepping forward. I think this is a good idea.
I mean, we can't fix what we've done in the past, but we can't fix what we've got going in the forward, so, you know, uh, we can, we can. We're just trying to take your guys' feedback and try to make this system better, or the best we can with what we have. So, um. Or at least that's my plan. That's, that's how I'm looking at it and, you know, um, try not to repeat the same mistakes.
Do you have some cost estimates? Is it, this new improvements, can the city even afford it, given the current water?
So what we've, we've got a grant that's paying for part of the uh to finish the upgrades. And then the rest of it, the town is already, we've already approved the purchase, so. So we received a grant for part of it and then the rest of it, um, we had the capital to to put for it.
So it's affordable for the town?
Yes, it is. And we've already approved it, I believe, last month, yes.
So how long will it take for all this to be put into place?
So the radios will come pretty quick, so it'll just be however quick the town can install the radios. Whether you guys are gonna do self-install around radios. So basically, that's just picking the old touchpad off, put the new radio on, and they got a device that. Activates it, puts it in place. So whatever that rate is, so that's kind of it. Um, as far as putting the infrastructure in. Takes me about, I would say, eight weeks to to get it here and then schedule the crew to come and uh do the install, so.
So are you referring to like the computers and the stuff they'll use inside the office? To communicate with those antennas or?
Yeah, so they'll use computers they have now, just, yeah, just a um, a backhaul data comes in from, from the, from the equipment. So, and I believe we're putting it on the lease.
It's just the antenna coax in there, then our technology is like a big box, we call it a base station.
Literally a nine-foot antenna, about inch around, I mean, you really will not even know it's there and, yeah.
Once that's installed, then we work on the software side of things. And the whole solution is not housed in Hennessy. It's, it's what we call on a SaaS or off-site server that we maintain the updates, the software. Making sure it all works, and we, then we deploy that, install that, get all your meters working, start working with CIC. Crane the integration, and then it's live.
So in other words, if something would happen here, right, if something hit the tower, whatever, you don't lose your data. Your data's at a secure station somewhere else, so.
Will we get the uh radios for each meter first so that the staff can be putting those in while we're waiting on the?
Yeah, that's a good plan.
Water tower. We actually plan on starting that probably within the next five months.
I'm sorry, how, how often did you say, sir? How soon?
Uh, we, we probably have the uh, the radios here within the month.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, I mean, September, not, not August.
So that's fast.
Once the equipment is installed and then moving everything, tip can be anywhere from a three to six month window, just depends on how fast. Now, depend, based on when you guys purchased, right, we've got some holidays to go through too that'll complicate, longer delete time. But in a general, once all material's here and all equipment's here, between the three to six months, turn around and the system can come on live. That's after all the hard work is done, which is the putting all the radios in every single one.
That's setup, training, and all.
Is there a warranty on the software part of it, like there is on the meters?
Yeah, so it's, the warranty is based on, it's like a maintenance agreement. And what we do is, um. Uh, all of the software, the updates that are performed, they're a part of your annual maintenance contract. So every year you renew that contract. And that affords you that all the updates, latest and greatest technologies available at your fingertips, and all security patches, everything's hardened. The virus comes out tomorrow, it's been protected, and we we maintain that throughout the entire maintenance program and contract. And life of the product.
And it's a yearly contract?
What's a contract like that cost for a town this size?
Yeah, if we don't.
I don't have those in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And is it something we can sign like a one to five-year contract on, or are we gonna see a ten or fifteen percent increase in this every year?
Yeah, we wouldn't be continuing to sell it if we had that much inflation in the product, but I understand the fear. Yeah, usually the price is quoted, the annual maintenance is. Is a five-year quote is presented in a five-year plan, and it has a, a, an escalation that's possible. You know, up to like a three percent increase annually, just like any other CPI index inflation rate is across any, 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 any. What you purchased milk for, for say.
So we price it out in five years for budgeting purposes. So then we get close to that five years and we'll.
A new five-year. Yeah.
So if, let's say, you, I mean, we didn't like your services or wasn't agreeing with what was going on. We wanted to hire somebody else to read the antenna and everything you guys were gonna install. Will somebody else's company and software interact with your guys' stuff? Or we're pretty well stuck with using what you guys provide?
Yeah.
If you guys did give us five or ten percent on the service contract, I mean, basically you could, cause we'd be stuck with you anyways.
Yeah, we've never done that before, but, yeah.
Just curious on this.
Yeah, it usually runs between two and three percent. I mean, that's, I've never seen it go over that.
The, the good thing, this census metering is the world's largest and oldest meter manufacturer. It's been around for a hundred and eighty-nine years, so.
Yeah, sorry, you had a question. Say the influence, I'm sorry. So I don't, I can't tell you that because it's actually done by census, um, but I know that that's the reason they do a five-year. So they, they look at that, create it over five years, and that's the reason we give you that. Does that make sense? Kind of follow that inflation rate.
But we, we've gone.
So what's the wise man radius?
Twenty years, twenty years. It's, yeah, it has a twenty-year warranty, just like.
Yeah, and as, as far as the town goes, when you guys do start getting that hourly update. And you guys notice that, hey, this customer here has an actual leak, or they have constant use of water. When y'all say you guys are gonna send somebody out there, are you gonna send them out there just to be like, hey, we're here to check your meter, is that it? Or are they gonna be, you guys gonna have them go inside and try to help them check the obvious solutions, toilet sinks? Stuff like that.
I mean.
I know there's older individuals in this town that don't have that ability.
Sure.
That can't get around their house that well, or don't know that unless you're.
Sure, and I know Alyssa's done that for people. She's gone out and she has found leaking toilets in the past. And, and she has been able to go out and they asked, and she was, she was happy to help. And I think for most of the town employees, that's probably gonna be the situation. I can't speak for them on every situation.
Right.
But yeah, so our, you know, I think probably the first method that they'll probably use is try to call whoever is on the bill. To let them know, hey, is there something going on? Are you filling a swimming pool? What's, you know, just to kind of ask. And then if we continue to see it, I know Shelley said we've ordered uh door knockers that we can leave on there if we're unable to get a hold of anybody and then. Um, I mean, we've, we've talked about maybe a policy of, you know, a certain amount of time, and we're not able to get a hold of anybody. And we continue to see this use, just shutting the water off and trying to, and so that's obviously not something that we've completely decided on. That's something that, that uh, had that idea's been, you know, uh, discussed, but. Um, that's still to be determined, so I don't want to say one way or another, but, um.
I think that's something we would need to let people either opt in or opt out. If, if they're on vacation and the town sees a leak, personally, I would want them to come shut my heater off. Because I may have a washing machine hose that broke and it's flooding everything. But sometimes folks have water softeners, electric water heaters, that'll burn those up if the water's off. So I think it would have to be a, a thing that they had a choice to opt in or opt out. But the, the uh, the app situation that Richard talked about. Sounds like the perfect solution to me, uh, if we can get to that point, and then the customers notified. And then they can make a decision, uh, if they're on vacation, send a, a family member or a neighbor over to check. And see what's going on. Um, not only is it gonna prevent a high water bill, it may prevent a lot of home damage as well.
I don't know if any of you have uh Eagle Propane, if, most of you live in city limits, but Eagle Propane has the app. And I can see, it's not hourly, but. And I can see, it's not hourly, but like every two hours I can see what's going on and it does have an alarm that says, hey. Use way more gas in the last hour and a half than you have all winter. And I had that, I had to go for eat a line and the gas was just, lost almost a whole tank, so. But we got it shut off because the app told me we had a leak, so.
That's the idea.
I think that's, that's a great direction for us to head, so, obviously, unfortunately, we can't snap our fingers and have it here, but. Um, I think we're, we're in the right direction, so. Anybody else?
So to kind of cap down on that last question, if you never, y'all do send somebody out there, are you guys gonna charge the customer an extra fee or anything?
At this time, we don't, um, I, I, I'm not something I've even considered or thought about at this point, so. Um, I think whenever we start working on that policy and, and trying to update our policies like Harold was saying, which is. I think something that we need to take a look at for sure, um, we'll, we'll consider all things, but at this time, that's, that's not something I've even thought about, so. If nobody else has any other questions, I wanna thank TJ and Jeff for coming out and, and giving us this presentation. And trying to help us understand a little bit better on what we have, and, uh, thank everyone for attending and, and I appreciate your guys' comments and concerns. So, uh, thanks for coming out and, uh.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to adjourn. Oh, oh, you did it. Okay, I'll second it, sorry. I thought you were asking me.